Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is Tuesday, June 10th at approximately 6:30 PM and we are meeting in the Harry Butters Selectmen's Chambers at Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street in Norwood, Mass. We would, before we get into our agenda, like to start with our Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a little string of appointments tonight and before we get started on them, we'll see if we can knock out a few items. So I'd like to start off with item number one, which is the warrant signature update, submitting notification of reviewed and approved warrants signed by the Board's representative. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous. And we'll go to item number two, which is meeting minutes for approval of the Board. These are the minutes from May 27th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sad. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous. All right, our first appointment isn't until 6:45, so I'm going to jump down to start going through our consent agenda on new business as usual. I'll read the list of the items. If there's an item that somebody wants to hold for a discussion, we'll just say hold and I'll make sure to pull that one out of the lineup and then we'll just take one vote to approve everything that is not pulled aside for discussion. So start with item 4.1. This is a park use request for the Disabled Veterans Park by Emmanuel Lutheran Church. They're submitting a request to use the park for a worship service and picnic on Sunday, July 27th, 2025, 10:00 AM till 3:00 PM. They're expecting 50 to 60 guests. Item 4.2, this is a park use request for Bond Street Tot Lot. This is a request for Saturday, August 23rd, 2025, from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. It's for a child's birthday party. I have two tables with food and cake and blankets and chairs on the grass, approximately 25 guests expected. Hold. Hold, all right. Item 4.3 is a block party request for Railroad Ave. This is Bob Blood submitting a request to hold a block party on Saturday, September 6th, from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM on Railroad Ave between Fulton and Prospect Streets.
Hold for a question.
Sure, no problem. Item 4.4, this will be a mortgage lien discharge, 11 Quincy Avenue, for signature of the Board. And I'm going to hold item 4.5, which is the MWRA sewer bond, for approval and signature of the Board. And I'm also going to hold item 4.6, it's a request for a memorial statue over at the Westover Parkway. And item 4.7, cemetery deeds for signature of the Board. And, all right, so 4.1, 4.4, 4.7, do I have a motion for that group of items?
No.
Second. Moved by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous. So that will take care of those items. Let's see, so we've got maybe a couple of minutes, I can jump down and just get my Miranda out of the way. Do I have a motion on my Miranda?
Table 1, 5.1, 5.2.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right, made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous. All right. With that, still a little early, so if we want, we can, before our appointments get rolling, we start on item 4.2. 4.2, this is the Bond Street Tot Lot request. I believe Mr. Plasko was the one that had a hold on that.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a problem with the general requests. That's a nice little park there, a couple of tables, could have a little function like that. What I'm concerned about is the request for the Tot Lot. That's a very highly-used Tot Lot and I don't want the rest of the public to be excluded by them saying, "We have use of this park." So I would not be in favor of that portion of the request. They can use it, it's public, but they can't claim, so...
So no exclusivity.
Right. That would be my position.
No further discussion. Mr. Donnelly?
Madam Chair, perhaps the, should we approve this, maybe we can approve it with the stipulation that the Tot Lot itself is remain, is not for exclusive use of the petitioner, but rather is still open to all, to the public as it usually is among that lines.
Now, we're just gonna say the same thing, the bill's right on that, so you wanna put that in a motion, Bill?
I think Bob just said what I said, and more of a form of a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, as the motion to approve, the request with the stipulation that the petitioner be advised that the Tot Lot itself remains open for the public and is not for the exclusive use of the party group that's gonna be there that day.
Second.
All right, so made by Mr. Donnelly and seconded by Mr. Plasko. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous. And I think I see a couple of folks filtering in, still a little early. Let's see if we can get one more out of the way. Well, let's try the block party. So we'll go down to 4.3, this block party request. I believe Mr., was this Mr. Donnelly?
It's Donnelly.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that, should we approve this, which I am in favor of, that the folks proposing the party know to, I believe it's our standard practice to ask the petitioner to notify neighbors?
I think we do. Oh, notify who?
The Butters.
Yeah, that's part of the block party, invite neighbors.
Yeah.
We always wanna make sure the police and fire are notified.
And the police and fire are notified as well. So with that, I just wanted to make that comment, you know, I will, a motion for the approval of the block party.
Yeah, so a motion for approval with the stipulation of making sure that the police and fire are aware.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Plasko. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in fever, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous. So I think if the folks for 6:45 are here, as long as it's fine with them, I can take them early. Welcome, please have a seat. Thanks for coming in to see us tonight.
You're welcome.
And for the benefit of the long-term public record, if you could introduce yourself and then...
Michael Clemmie from Subaru, New England, and Mr. Bach, representing Mr. Bach and his family and part of his family. And here to present a check for Mr. Bach and the family to the town, the Board, to use whatever way they'd like.
Thank you so much.
And we appreciate the relationship, long-term relationship, going all the way back to Ernie's grandfather.
Absolutely. We really appreciate you coming in tonight.
Absolutely.
All open for questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Sad?
Gotta say hey, and to Ernie and you and the entire Bach family, congratulations and thank you for your support and your love for the town of Norwood. And thanks for coming to the Bernie Cooper dedication. It's always a pleasure to talk to you and, you know, we fought hard to get that park and you guys were generous enough to sell it to the town and I thank you for that and we won't talk off tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it, Madam Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Clemmie, thank you and also thank you to Mr. Bach for the fund. It's such a popular item and I know last year, when I was at the chair, it was my first time facilitating the process and can't tell you how thrilled the organizations are. We have more requests than the money will fund, so we have to make our studious decisions regarding, everybody doesn't get what they ask for, but the vast majority of folks do get something from this fund and I know they appreciate it as well. So I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge your contribution, the contribution of the Bach family to this, to the town and it's really well appreciated. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
A big thank you. You're here every year, we appreciate it.
I come every year.
Can't say much more than thank you.
And likewise, you know, my gratitude, we can definitely confirm that all of the applicants, this allows us to do things that we might otherwise not be able to squeeze into a budget, so it's very helpful for supporting, you know, all of our little groups in the community. So very appreciated, we really appreciate you coming in tonight.
It's our pleasure, it's a great relationship. We love the town of Norwood and the town loves us back, I hope.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We won't keep you long, but thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you.
Great to see you.
See you soon, my friend.
He's in the car.
Yeah.
Take care.
Thank you. All right, Christine, I believe, we'll go ahead and get this to you.
Norwood days on September 6th. It's the same day as the other thing.
All right, so our next appointment will be 7:00 PM, which again, this one is a hearing, so I believe we do kinda have to wait until 7:00 PM. So we will go ahead and move down to item 4.5. This is the MWRA sewer bond for approval and signature of the Board. Do you have any, I thought there might be, so I put it aside automatically, but is there any comments or questions about it?
That was pretty standard, I've been doing it for years.
Yeah, so, all right, great, well, if there's...
Motion to approve.
Great. Motion made to approve and sign. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Donnelly has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous. All right, I think we can do the next one before 7:00. So this is item 4.6, this is a request for a memorial statue. This was from Debbie Springer. It's requesting to put a statue of her dog, who passed away, at the entrance to a small pathway off Westover Parkway. And the request says that this is a spot where many Norwood residents walk their dogs and meet to chat. The statue would be no larger than 20 inches in height and she would also like to place a bench along that same pathway. And the request states that the applicant would incur all the costs associated, as well as the upkeep associated with the bench and the statue. On item 4.6, do we have questions, comments? Mr. Plasko?
I have a concern with this request for the statue. In particular, we have certainly a practice of people paying for placing benches in memory of someone or some event, so that's not new. I could have personally approved that at a location to be approved by the manager. You could take into consideration, I'm sure, the DPW, police, fire, everybody else who might be concerned with that pathway, that the location's appropriate. But the statue, even though it's a small, 20-inch statue, it's one more thing that's in town and all this person says they'll take care of it for how long and what happens to it afterwards and just the general concept of throwing statues all around town for individual requests, I don't know, it just doesn't sit right, doesn't seem like it's a good practice. So I could certainly support the bench with a plaque on it, but not this individual statue.
And then I had some thoughts on it as well. One of the things is, I don't mind, I find public art to be beneficial, like I don't mind statues, like some of my favorite statues in the town are statues that only exist because an individual person donated private money and art and placed it there. The vigilance statue, for example, is the result of someone said, "I really liked statues when I was in Italy, so I want Norwood to have one too." And they happen to choose a topic that everyone can relate to. And so for me, the issue is more about, you know, I lost a pet, like, I'd rather a statue be about everyone's pets as opposed to a specific pet. So I'm not in favor of a statue if the statue's about a specific pet because we would all love to put a statue for all of our pets. I mean, pets are dear to everybody, they're practically family members for many people. And I'm with Mr. Plasko on the bench, you know, make sure the manager and everyone is on board. A bench is something that we've, you know, all done and we've approved many benches for memorial purposes over the years and I think a bench is fine, but the statue, if the statue was more of a, in honor of all dog lovers, you know, I'd be more in favor, but for a specific dog, I'm less in favor. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Donnelly?
I just wanna make sure, and I'm pretty sure this is correct, but the area that's indicated here for the location of the bench and the statue, that's under our purview. It's not conservation property, Michael, if we can just double-check that.
I can double-check. I believe it is under town property, but yes, I looked at the map earlier.
All right, thank you.
I'll double-check.
And Mr. Sad?
I think that, I don't have a pet, so it really doesn't affect me, but I think the person who's donating the bench, and they're pretty expensive, as I asked for a bench at the cemetery, they're three grand. And if the person's willing to put up three grand to put a nice beautiful bench up and save the taxpayers money and a little statue, you know, two of these Coke bottles or water bottles up, I'm all for it. I don't think it's a bad thing and if everybody else wants to do it, we won't have to buy benches for the next 10 years. So that's my opinion.
All right, do we have a motion then?
Perhaps just one more suggestion, just to push the, along, perhaps there's a, twofold, perhaps there's an opportunity for us to approve the bench and ask that the petitioner speak to the general manager's office regarding a more appropriate location for a statue or perhaps, maybe there's some ideas where the dedication to the, to her dog can be incorporated onto the bench itself.
Oh, yeah.
By way of a plaque or something like that, so that's the only comment I have. And I'm willing to make a motion, if you're ready. I'll just make a motion that we approve the request for the location of the bench only at this time and that...
With the manager's review?
With the manager's, have the petitioner meet with the manager regarding a more appropriate location or appropriate way to recognize the dedication or the statue or dedication to the dog, not per this request, perhaps some other ideas can be generated for that discussion. So approval for the bench only.
Okay. Do I have a second on Mr. Donnelly's motion? Seconded by Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, unanimous. We've got still another 10 minutes, we are just flying along. Well, Mr. Rosen, do you believe that you could get your manager's update done in 10 minutes?
Absolutely, I'm sure he could bring it.
Maybe 10.
Really draw it out.
Little follow-up, come on.
All right, I don't have too, too much to report, but first thing is the staff capital group, Mr. Donnelly is the chair of Capital Outlay and I communicated with him that the staff capital was gathering together for the first time yesterday for the fiscal year '26. We're looking ahead to upcoming town meeting this fall, October, November timeframe, we're not sure of the exact date yet, but, so the staff gathered yesterday for the first time to take a look at FY '26 projects and we actually look all the way out to FY '30, it's a five-year plan. So we anticipate having probably another staff meeting or two in the near future, every two weeks or so, and we'll be ready to schedule Capital Outlay meeting in the near future to start looking at the future capital projects.
Question I know.
Sure.
Is there, I know it's subject to different approvals and input, but at this stage, what you're looking at would include any building construction type projects?
Yes, so all departments, including schools, if the schools have representation on the staff capital as well, they come to these meetings where we look at the five-year plan. We start to kick the tires, see if the quotes are accurate, if the funding, we start talking a little bit about what funding sources might be used for what projects and if there's any retooling of the five-year plan, things get pushed out, things get escalated due to need, and that's sort of what the purpose of these meetings are on the staff level, before we bring our best plan to Capital Outlay.
I was going to bring this up when we speak with the facilities people.
Sure.
But we just passed the bylaw where any projects supposed to go through them, supposed to be identified to them to do the original checking of the pricing, if the price seems right or it's updated, if it's a five-year plan. Every year should be updating it for construction increases and so forth, so I just wanna make sure that they're involved in that step of the process.
Absolutely, and certainly worth bringing up when they're here as well, but they are, Paul Ricardi was at the meeting yesterday and indicated there are some construction projects coming down the road that we're looking at. Obviously, Town Hall's still looming a couple of years from now, that's on the, a year three, I believe, on the plan. I know the library's going through some construction, right now they have a study being done and the first phase of construction is gonna be in fiscal '26 and I think a second phase would be projected out for FY '30. So it's still very variable, it's a living document, but...
Do you know what kind of numbers we're talking for each one? They all, for example, are they all over a million and a half?
Actually, funny enough, the first phase of the library project looks like it's 1.4 million, so that's based on the study that was done through the last budget process where they funded the study and design. That's gonna be recommending to, you know, to the next town meeting, a construction cost of about 1.4, but that's just from what I heard from the library director yesterday.
Did they build in an inflationary number on that or is that an old number?
That's a, that's a new number that just got generated through the study that was done, so it is under the one and a half million. I think that was, just happened to be that way, it wasn't intentionally done that way. And then we do, I know there's a fire engine on the plan for next year.
Separate, yeah.
As well as roof replacement at Willard School.
At this point, on this discussion, just concerned about construction.
Yeah.
And size of the construction projects.
Yes, those are bigger ticket items though, obviously, so, but this is our first gathering and we will, the goal is to get a good plan together so that Capital Outlay can start to review it by end of June, maybe July, Bob's idea.
Yeah, I did put a note out to the members of the committee to, you know, one of the tricky parts about Capital Outlay is that because we're planning for review and approval at the fall town meeting in October, that means that summertime actually is the period of, from a meeting perspective, that's most important to the committee. So I am feeling the vacation requests and time off schedules folks have, I'd like to be able to have at least one meeting in the month of July, probably followed by another one in August, so that we are prepared, I think, in the September timeframe to vote and put that, because we gotta get on the warrant for the October meeting sometime in September timeframe.
Absolutely.
Gets to be kinda compressed, so...
It goes fast.
We shoot for July, hopefully. We'd like to also, as part of our process, one of the initial meetings we have, and Mike, you're familiar with this, I'm sure you'll remind the department heads of those, physical items such as the equipment changeover or purchase of the fire engine, we'd like to have a look and feel by using the lot behind us here to bring the equipment that they are advocating for a replacement so that the members can get a good view of what is wrong with our existing equipment, so that the department heads can advocate why they need the new fire engine and things like that. It's been a really good approach that we've adopted the last three or four years, for members to get an understanding of what the department needs really are, so...
And actually, Mr. Cheever, the library director, volunteered the library to be, to host the show and tell this year because he, while you're there, take a look at the library building.
That's a nice idea.
Yeah, so that came out of that meeting yesterday as well. I just have two or three other quick things, I know our next appointment is here. I didn't wanna steal Mr. Donnelly's thunder, but I did wanna mention that our concert series are beginning with our first concert on July 2nd, which is early this year because we have a special show. It's Paul Alberta Tribute Band, Kyle Leonard, our local saxophone player who played with the Boston Pops, will be our kickoff show, July 2nd. All shows are at 6:30 on the Town Common and we are gonna have, I think, nine total Wednesday shows this year and then eight Sunday shows, as well as the eight Monday Carolan shows, so very musical summer as we always have in Norwood. And Mr. Donnelly, I'm sorry for stealing that from you.
It's okay.
Well, they want me to filibuster for four more minutes, so... Also, one, Mr. McFarland reached out, letting us know that the Farms Market is beginning June 17th, next Tuesday, for the first, the first time for this, for this summer, 2:00 to 6:00 PM, so that's, that's cool. And then, I just wanted to also mention that we've been having some little visitors at Town Hall, third graders have been coming from different schools. Today, the Callahan School visited us, Friday, the Balch School will be here. I believe it was the Prescott that was here last week, I helped tour them around, Oldham, sorry, thank you, Mr. Don. John Grove and I toured them around the building and took them up to the Carolan Tower and everything, so it's, it was fun and it was a lot of exercise going up and down several times, so that is all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. We still have, what, four minutes? Do we have to wait the entire four minutes?
I can probably turn the agenda for four minutes.
All right, we can start going through the agenda just...
Well, Mr. Rosen stole so much of my thunder here. I don't have to talk, it was really, it was a fun day today, taking the third graders from the Callahan through the, through the building today. I wanted to thank Mr. Grove, John Grove, for standing in for our Carolan Lee Leach who was out of town presently, and so John was able to show the, the third graders from the Oldham, as he did last week, a tour of the Carolan Tower, which they love, and I was able to have the rest of the group downstairs in Memorial Hall for a little lesson in Norwood history and also a walk through the Town Hall in a little time in this building as well. So yes, we have one more to go with the Balch on Friday. With Mr. Rosen just updating us regarding the concert committee, concert program, I thought it might be opportune time, as we normally do, to ask the members of the concert committee to come in at our next meeting, so they can speak to specifically the 25-plus concerts that are planned at the Carolan and as well as the Common and give them some PR and certainly as well to identify and recognize the organizations that have been so supportive of the Norwood Concert Committee that allowed us to have this ongoing series for yet another summer, going on more than 40 years now of concerts in the Common. I also wanted to just make, mention that the building committee did meet, the middle school building committee, we had our monthly meeting on Monday and it, building is really coming along quite well. The schedule right now is, once the school, the old school closes, when the students leave, there'll be a transition, they're starting to be filling in with the equipment to the new school and they will be turning the building over, the contractor will be turning the building over to the facilities department sometime in August. There is planned, and I want to now make mention at future meetings as well, on August the 25th, that's a Monday, at 1:00 PM, there is a plan to have a ribbon cutting ceremony at the new school site, so you'll hear about that more as we go along, but if you can jot that date down your calendars, that's 1:00 PM on Monday, the 25th of August, that'll be the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new middle school and it's really coming along. Mr. Rosen, I've been actually able to see that the swimming pool's coming along as well and it appears that they are on target for finishing the job by the end of the month, I'm guessing.
That's fair, guess was a dollar.
I think they look like they're making a lot of progress.
They are.
Pool's got water in it.
They are, they're doing a great job.
See that?
They're doing a great job.
So lots of activity down that part of town. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, all right.
Good job.
Did I, did I use up to four minutes, boss?
I have two minutes.
We're two, we're two minutes by the internet and right on the dot with that clock, which clock would we prefer to use?
Use that one.
So if, if the, if we think that we're close enough to seven, given two minutes, settle on that clock, and that way we don't have to keep you any longer, so I'm gonna go ahead and have you start taking a seat and getting settled in. Thank you. Yep, please, thank you.
These guys.
All right, this, whoops, yep, we are going to have a liquor hearing, this is for Euro and Kabob House, and Christine, would you be so kind as to read the notice?
Excuse me. Application has been made to the Licensee Board of the Town of Norwood for all alcoholic beverages for Norwood Bureau Incorporated DBA, Euro and Kabob House, located at 1275 Boston Province Highway, Norwood, Massachusetts. Bashir is on manager of record under chapter 138, section 12 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as amended for the sale of all alcohol beverages to be drunk on the premises of 1275 Boston Province Highway, Norwood, Massachusetts. Description of premises is as follows. Located on the first floor of a one-story shopping plaza containing approximately 2,888 square feet with one entrance in the front and one exit in the rear of the building. Public hearing on this application will be held on Tuesday, 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Havenley Brothers Chambers, Room 34, Norwood Town Hall.
All right, thank you. Welcome, this is a public hearing, I would like to welcome you, but also ask that for the benefit of the public record, that you introduce yourselves.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Attorney Tom Truax, I'm an attorney up in Salem, Massachusetts, and with me is Mr. M.D. Bashir Islam. He is the president of the corporation, the proposed licensee, he's also the proposed license manager.
Mm-hmm. Excellent, thank you. And we have your application with all of the attached documents, and I saw that you brought further documentation for.
Okay, so a little back, there needs to be a little bit of history on this because there was a backstory on this. So the prior licensee, which was Kebab House Corporation, I believe, they entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Gyro Inc., with my licensee, the proposed licensee, Norwood Gyro Inc. And that was in the summer, this past summer, the last summer. And what happened is that there was a delay on the part of the prior licensee. So as a result of that, the prior licensee, there was, there was, there was delays on both parties' part. But what happened is the prior licensee wanted to move, she wanted to move to Florida. And so she gave an ultimatum to my client, the current licensee, the prior, proposed licensee, that either we close the end of Sep, end, beginning of September without the transfer having been approved, or the deal doesn't go through. So both parties made an educated decision that they would proceed with the transaction, but that the, the transfer application would be, would be, would follow. So what happened afterward, we got a lot of, there was delays, as I said, on the part of both the buyer and seller, but what ultimately happened is that in October, when the, our client was, and I was, was ready to file the transfer application with this board, we got a lack of cooperation from the licensee, the current licensee. So she would not give us an updated DOR certificate of good standing, she would not give us the updated DUA certificate of compliance. And more importantly, we were now getting into November and she refused to, because we knew it was going to probably kick over into January before we got the actual approval by the ABCC. So she refused to renew, do the renewal. So I, I consulted with my client, and really the only other option we had, knowing that she was not going to cooperate, was that we would have to forego doing a transfer application and that her license would expire on December 31st and that we would immediately file, file on January 2nd for a new, new license. I know there was no guarantee that we could get the, you know, everything would follow along from the transfer to the new, but that was our only option, given what she had put us in, in that situation she has put us in. So on January 2nd, I personally drove down here to Norwood and Christine wasn't in, but there was another woman that was here, and she accepted our application. And then for the next four months, Christine and I have been going back and forth in terms of, she's been keeping me updated with the ABCC and the, the updated quota from the ABCC. And so she finally got that, and I believe it was in, in May, and so at that point in time, she was able to accept our application for the new application. So the long and the short of it is that this was supposed to be a transfer application for section 12 restaurant, all alcoholic beverages licensed. If it wasn't for the seller not cooperating, we would be here on a different manner, we would have been here a number of months ago. So we are here before you on a new application now. It's the same location, same license, everything's the same, only we have a new ownership team that's going in there. Mr. Islam is a proposed license manager. He and his, his team, there's a lot of experience in the restaurant business. He himself is the owner and operator of a section 12 restaurant, all alcohol beverage license in Brighton. But I know I'm pronouncing.
Babushka Deli.
Right. And that is, that is a full alcoholic license and city in Brighton. And he's been working there and owning that since 2016. So he's had other stores before that, but that was the, the one that he started with alcohol involved, it was a section 12. So he's had about a little over eight years of experience working in the restaurant business. He's tip certified. In addition, is the, the ownership team includes two, two people, and I know I mentioned some of the things in the application, other licenses, but Mr. Naral Patel, he owns restaurant, I think he has three or four section 12 restaurants with full alcoholic beverage licenses. I believe two, one is in Seaport, or one is in, one, two are in Bos, three are in Boston, and one in fact is also here in Norwood, which is the 1947 restaurant, which is on, I think, 957 Providence Highway. It's an Indian restaurant. I'm familiar with that concept because it's with the Gotavari Group. It's sort of an Indian group that started up in Woburn when we did our first license and has expanded now, he's, he's around the country and in Canada, in fact. So Naral Patel has about four restaurants with, which he has a tremendous amount of experience. And then Fortages Chikari, he also has at least, I think, two restaurants, one I think is the Seaport, the new one in Seaport. I haven't been there, but I've seen it. Very nice restaurant. And then he has one in, in Boston proper. And those have been very successful. And I think the, the team that's before you now, with Mr. Bashar Al Islam being the license manager, is going to have a lot of experience to this location. And you're already familiar with one location where they, where at least one of the members of that, this team is going to be, has already, you know, been there, I think since 2021, if I'm not mistaken. So again, there's just going to be a lot of, a lot of ownership experience here, a lot of restaurant experience here. I think it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood. I wanted you to understand just the background, so you can understand how we got here. We wouldn't normally get here this way, and we would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent, thank you. With that, take questions or comments from the board.
Are you going to go first up the door? You ready to go first?
Questions?
Yeah.
If I may. Could you further explain the, working for a secular day only or weekday or seven days? What are you looking for?
So the, the hours on it is, as I've been told, it's a seven day a week. I believe it's 11 to 9:30.
11 a.m. to 9:30 p.m.?
Yeah, yes. I'm not sure if Norwood has, allows a 412, that's the only fly in the ome, and I just don't have the answer for. On Sunday.
The floor plan that we asked for, unless I'm missing something, it seems to be of the kitchen. I don't see anything of the dining area.
I know it was a hand drawn diagram.
Yeah, and that looked almost like two of the same to me, unless that's what got into my packet.
If I remember correctly. I'm looking at the one that's part of the lease, which is the exhibit A.
That just shows where it is in the premises, on the complex.
I know he explained it to me and I understood it.
Shows the back garage.
Yeah, there it is, there, okay, yeah.
Shows kitchen equipment. I don't see anything, anything's about table or serving. For example, you're going to have a bar, you're going to be table service only. What's the intended operation?
No, this is a 32-seat in front. It's not a, it's a, it's not a table service. So they will come up to the counter to make their orders and the, the alcohol is behind the counters and in, in refrigeration and in, on shelves. It's behind the counter. It's, it's the same thing as what it was before with the prior order. Nothing has changed. Nothing is changing in the floor plan itself. It's still the same restaurant. So you still have the same seating area in the front, and then you have the counter, and then you have the back, which is, this, I know he showed a lot of the back. But I thought he had, God, I swear it was all in here.
Well, I, I see a document on, on exhibit A, the lease premises.
Yeah, that's, I know that's the lease premise, I know, yeah, I don't know the answer on that, I just know it's, the front of it is, in front of the counter where there are tables and chairs, and you can probably explain better exactly what the front is, out, out front. Go ahead.
The front is like the counters, you know, the counter, then that's where we need to put the liquor on back, then the kitchen is started.
Right, but in front of the counter, what's the seating arrangement? Tables and chairs, or is there?
Tables and chairs, left and right.
Okay.
And some on middle too.
Is the, you're explaining it pretty well, I think, is the food service is also council service, everyone?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's not a table, I mean, unlike the one that's their other one, that's 14, 1974, 1947, that is a table service. I understand that. This is a different concept a little bit. It's, don't forget, this is a different type of food too, it's Turkish food versus Indian food.
And I'm concerned that you have outdoor tables set up and that the license would only be for inside the premises.
Indoor, right.
I noticed that your landlord also has that in the lease, but he could change his mind tomorrow, so we have that, we'll have that on the license. But how do you intend to control that? You're not even doing table service, somebody comes up to the counter, turns around and walks out?
I mean, that's, that's the job of, of him as, as a manager. I mean, there will be signage as well that no alcoholic beverage allowed outside, which I've seen in a lot of restaurants, they do the same thing. I understand your concern, but I think, you know, it's not a huge restaurant, it's not like it's unwieldy to be able to keep control of it. I think between the signage and between the, you know, the control from the, the managers and the front staff, that they should be able to keep it under control. I mean, I, we're certainly willing to, you know, take any suggestions that you have to, to do it. I mean, obviously the license is only going to be inside, I mean, as simple as that.
Thank you.
Further questions, Mr. Sed?
It was a little confusing seeing this sketch diagram on the back.
Yeah.
So if it was on Shark Tank, you'd have a problem. But.
I'm sorry?
No, no, it's just the way it was. So my question is, you're buying a full, you're getting a full liquor license, are we getting it from the town? Did the lady turn it in?
Well, technically it expired as of December 31st.
Yeah.
So it technically is the same license that was turned in, so to speak. But it's, it's part of the town licenses.
Okay, we own it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, when they came, when they came in for the transfer of the license, we asked them about the liquor, and they weren't looking for the liquor at that time, for different reasons, as Tony explained. So that license got turned back when they didn't apply for continuing it at the end of the year, and that's now certified as available by the ABCC.
All right, they put us in a bind and, and I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
But they put us in a bind that we shouldn't have been in if, in a normal circumstance, if the seller had cooperated.
So we're not going to have any tables in this restaurant, it's all going to be people just standing up eating food?
No, this is tables, there's tables and chairs.
Inside?
Inside.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see that on the diagram.
No, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I know, that's what.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, I can, I can ask that a further diagram show the tables and chairs, I mean, I have no problem doing that.
Further question? I think I know the answer, or you wouldn't be sitting here because you were waiting for, make sure everything was clear, and the previous owner didn't cooperate. But are you all set with the taxes and everything with the state?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you for the explanation upfront regarding the license. So for all intents and purposes, it becomes a license that is available to the selectmen since the previous owner neither transferred it or sought to sell it. So it's, it's part of our quota and I appreciate your explanation. On, on the table diagram, I think your explanation regarding, it doesn't look like you're doing much changes from the previous owner. Familiar with that, so I know the table's set up there, and that's, there's no other major changes to the interior. I appreciate the information you've given us regarding the experience of both the team and yourself, sir, which is good. That's good to know that you are familiar with operating facilities that are licensed. And thank you for the explanation about Mr. Patel. I wasn't really realized that there was a Norwood connection there, so I appreciate that as well. So I don't have any specific questions, I think you've addressed them pretty well, Madam Chair, so from, from my perspective, I'm, I'm satisfied that the application has been sufficiently submitted to us for our consideration.
And then for myself, I am familiar with some of the establishments that you've named, the 1937, the previous layout of the existing establishment, so I didn't have any particular questions. The, do I have any further comments or questions from the board before I turn over to, since it is public here? Public comment. So seeing no further questions from the board, at this time, if there is a member of the public present who would wish to make a comment, I will have them recognized. And seeing.
Saying none, make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko to close the hearing. Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. All right. With that, do we have a motion?
Couple of comments. Should the license be approved? I want to make sure that it specifically lists the days and times of operation and that they be, state clearly that there be no outdoor dining allowed. But besides that, I'm opposed to the issuance of this license. I think the location, the limit of 34 tables, and not comfortable with the counter service. Says that's what it was before, but I don't think we realized that, or at least I didn't realize that, that there wasn't table service. I thought there was, I thought that was explained to us at the time. I think they originally wanted to do counter service, and when we objected to that, they agreed to do, and I, I don't know if they ever did or not, but they were supposed to have. And I just generally don't think with 34 seats, that that's officially serving the public good and need in that area, particularly as he indicated, all the other food establishments are licensed that are already in the area. So I, I just, I just don't see it a good use of this particular license in the town.
All right. Further, further action on this item?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion. I make a motion to approve the license with the stipulations that Mr. Plasko indicated that the license include detail regarding days and times of operations and also the added restriction that there be no outdoor dining and that that restriction be made clear to the licensee and to the patrons, should this be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly. Do I have a second? Motion fails. All right. We're at an impasse.
No, no, motion lost, two votes passed.
All right. Any further action we need at this point?
I understand where you're coming from, I just, I feel so bad, I mean, you're punishing my client for something that he had no control over. And my client has been a good, a good business addition, business attribute in the Norwood community. And I know I have other clients that are, that have restaurants here in Norwood, and it's a good community, I know, but I just think you're punishing my client for something he had no control over, and I don't think that's fair. So be it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are at our next appointment.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could we go back to, can we vote on and not hold the bonds, sewer bonds?
We do.
I think we're supposed to read that motion.
Ah, we're going to record.
And just for the record, if I may.
Yes.
That on that item for bond for 392,500 sewer bond of the town dated June 16th, 2025, Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the authority is hereby approved by the treasurer and/or other appropriate town officials, is authorized to execute behalf of the town a loan agreement, financial assistance agreement. With the authority, with the respect to the bond, the bond shall be payable without interest on May 15th of the years, and in the principal amounts as follows, begins 2026 and is every consecutive year until and including 2035. Each year is the exact same amount of money to be paid, $39,250. I think that's what the public needs to know. The rest of the information we have in our packets, it's. The rest of the information we have in our packets, it's kind of, uh, housekeeping language. And just make a motion that this be, uh, inscribed in our minutes, uh, for the record.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, unanimous. There are still three of us, we still have quorum. So, we can move to, thank you. We can move to our next appointment. Hello, gentlemen, thank you for coming in to see us tonight. Thank you. Who would like to go first? And obviously, uh, as a reminder, we introduce ourselves for the benefit of the public record. So, would we like to start on fire side or police side tonight? Start on fire, very well.
Uh, good evening, and thank you, Tim Bailey, Fire Chief. Uh, our call volume, uh, as of this morning, uh, thirty-one, three thousand one hundred and fifty-three emergency runs, two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one fire prevention calls, for total calls for service of six thousand and four to date. Uh, mutual aid, which I've mentioned on the previous meetings here with you folks, is, uh, four hundred and eighteen to date since January one, ninety-six given, but three hundred and twenty-two received here into town. Uh, and with the majority of those, ninety-eight percent of those being, uh, for ambulance. Uh, our training continues on with, uh, a lot of EMS training over the last month, a month and a half since I was last here. Uh, we actually have a home that we're using for training, uh, for the next two days, that'll be tomorrow and Thursday. Uh, so we'll be getting the crews in there for that. On the, uh, capital apparatus and capital end of things, the ladder has been returned, uh, we have gotten it back. It is in service, it's been in service for about three weeks now. Uh, we've had a few little issues, but nothing major that's taken it out of service, and it seems to be running okay. Um, I am still looking to put that on the, uh, replacement schedule for the fall town meeting through the capital process. Um, we're in the process of just starting that out yesterday, actually. Um, and the reason for that is it's a three to three and a half year build out for a new ladder truck, and that'll be about the time that it's due anyways at the end of that, so, um, that'll be, there'll be more coming on that as we move forward. Uh, we'll also be looking for an ambulance out of that as well, uh, out of the, uh, capital process, uh, as our ambulances have been getting, uh, an awful lot of mileage put on them, and to keep up with the, again, serious time delays in getting them of two to two and a half years, uh, we, we try to be ahead of that curve as we move forward. Uh, we're in the process of closing out two grants that we received, that have to be closed out by June thirty. We do have all the equipment in hand, and we're just processing the paperwork now, so that, that is, uh, moving forward favorably. Um, a big project that we have coming up in the next couple of months, um, is the apparatus floor is being resurfaced. And with that, we're going to have to do a lot of shuffling with the interior of the station. Uh, everything that's inside on the apparatus floor has to be, come out and be moved, so that the new floor can go down. It'll be about a week for us to take everything out and put it outside, we're going to get a tent for the outback in the back parking lot. And when the project actually starts, and that'll take about a week to get our stuff out in the, in the tent. And then, for the two weeks that it takes to do the actual process, our apparatus will be out on the front ramp, so, um, it's, it's a short window, but it's a lot of moving parts and a little chaotic, so... Uh, but we're coordinating with all the other departments that are, are involved heavily with the police, I've, I've mentioned to Chief Padden already, and, uh, we'll, we'll work through it and make it work, so. Um, HREC, um, has, we've got a grant when we went to that a couple of years ago. The grant money was sitting there, they were ordering equipment, but there was some serious delays with the equipment. That has all been, all the equipment is in, it's kind of been rectified, we have seven of the sites are now online. Uh, we have a few more sites to go, it has already improved our, on the fireside anyways. Our radio communications, uh, have improved dramatically already. Uh, we still have some issues with some of our interior on some of the other buildings that'll rectify when the whole system is out, but, um, it is moving in the right direction. On personnel front, we had two new hires over the last month, uh, Brian Mulford, who came to us from Walpole, and Nathan Postero, who came to us from Northbridge. Uh, both did their orientation time with us, and are both now on shift and on their respective groups working. Um, they came to us already trained as firefighters and medics, so, uh, it was a win-win for us. Uh, Mitchell Sanchez graduated from the Fire Academy, and he is also on shift. Uh, I attended the dedication of Cooper Park, uh, back in the early May, and, um, both of our departments, uh, represented the town of Norwood very favorably, uh, last week at the Heroes Cup, which is a hockey tournament, they won their first three games, which qualified for them for the semifinals. Uh, yesterday morning, uh, unfortunately, they lost, uh, five to four to PBD, but, uh, they gave it a great effort and they had a great time, a lot of camaraderie there, so, and that's what I have.
And no one was hurt.
And no one was hurt.
Before I move to Chief Padden, I'll take a moment for questions and comments on fire. Start with Mr. Donnelly?
Sure, uh, Chief, thank you for the report. Um, so currently, you mentioned the, uh, the, the equipment needs for the ladder truck and the ambulance, so we have two ALS ambulances now, and one of them is needed in replacement?
Yeah, so we, we, we got two of them two years ago.
Yep.
And they both have roughly sixty thousand miles on them. With a two and a half year wait for the new ambulances, they'll be well over a hundred, so, we, we try to keep them in, in cycles, so... It, we're not ordering two at the same time as we did the last time, we're going to try to stagger those so that it's not such a heavy lift.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, two and a half year wait for the ambulance?
It could, two to two and a half.
That makes sense, all right. Thank you, that's all, only question I had, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Question?
Thank you. Chief, I'm losing track of time, I don't know if it was six weeks ago, four weeks ago, but, uh, your crew took me to the hospital. Uh, they did an excellent job. Um, my wife was a little concerned, I thought she could drive me, but she was a little too nervous to do it, a little too upset on that evening, and relied on the department to come, and took me out, and, uh, like I say, an excellent job, very professional, always courteous. I know, I've unfortunately had to use it in the past as well, and whoever's on duty, whatever crew's on duty, is always very calming, and, uh, and as I say, I keep saying, professional, so, through you, I'd like to, uh, thank the whole department, and in particular, the crew on duty that night.
I'll make sure I pass that along, thank you.
On the public safety building, the floor, and I know you said you're working together, but do you have any concerns about access to the Sally Port?
No, we're going to be able to work that out. Um, we might have to shift some parking, the, the folks across the street at Shaw's have been good about letting us park off-site when we have the need, you know, if the training room's being used or things along those lines, so we'll work through that.
Okay, that was my next question, parking, it's kind of tight down there.
It is, but we've, we've been able to do it pretty well, and, and between the police and fire, we'll be able to make it, make it work.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Sad?
Chief, great job down there for both of yous again. Um, the only thought I had as, as a comment was on the, like, like the equipment and things just taken off the floor to store it. Do you ever think of just using the buses at the junior high and parking a couple in the parking lot?
I'm still, we're still working through some of the logistics, but, um, I'll keep that in mind.
Okay, other than that, that's it. Get ready for summer and have a great, uh, night.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
And then I just wanted to express gratitude, uh, for the work that you've been doing, helping to sort of inform surrounding communities about the impact of the hospital, not being there, they don't always make the connection of how much volume was coming through here, and how much of that volume may have been spilling into them as a result of us not being able to bring them just to Norwood. Uh, so I really appreciate that, that's the kind of awareness and outreach that we need in the surrounding communities, and so I just wanted to make sure I called that work out, because I know it's, it's an extra cycle on your already stretched times, so...
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. And with that, we will move to police side with Chief Padden, thank you so much.
Good evening, uh, Chris Padden, Chief of Police, Norwood. Um, you know, one of the things, before I even start into anything else, I just want to go back to this HREC, uh, grant that we received, the nine million dollars with the radio equipment, and it's really a big deal, uh, for police and fires. We have places within town where you really can't hear, especially on a portable radio, and you know, the officers Home Depot, Stop and Shop, we get a lot of calls up there, we're in that building, and because of the structure of the building, you know, we can't call out if we have shoplifters or theft or things along those lines going, and certainly for fire, if they were to have a fire. So, this project is really going to really improve our communications across the board. Right now, they're still operating on a analog system, and once we give notice to all the surrounding cities and towns, we'll switch over to the digital system, which hopefully will be even better. And they still have some other sites, I think they're still doing, working on the, the Foxborough site, uh, which will give us more range outside of town if we had to go for mutual aid. So, it's, it's really a big deal, it's one of the, kind of the things that HREC brought to us that, you know, saved the town ten million bucks, roughly, you know, so... Uh, with that said, um, you know, statistically, uh, we're still on track, uh, year to date, um, at the end of May, we had eighteen thousand five hundred and, uh, four calls for service, puts us roughly on track for where we were last year, roughly around forty-two thousand. Uh, we're coming into the busier part of the year, um, you know, through this summer and into the holiday season. This will definitely be busier than it is from January until this period in time, especially with all the rain we had. Uh, people aren't out like they normally are at this, this time of the year. Um, so that's about three thousand calls per month, hundred and two calls per day. Um, and you know, that breaks down into, and I just kind of want to go through some statistics. Uh, we've had about, roughly for arrests, a hundred and eleven drug arrests, um, orders for violations of restraining orders, about eighteen, which is not bad, a hundred and fifty-six warrant arrests, uh, roughly about sixty-one, uh, OUI drinking and driving, sixty-three protective custody's, another fifty-three roughly, uh, mental health transportation. Uh, that number doesn't seem right, I'm, I'm sure it's just the way we put it in, because we have a lot of voluntary people that go, as opposed to involuntary, so, that statistic is probably only the involuntary, um, and I know the Fire Chief will agree with me on that. We run mental health folks up to the hospital all the time, police and fire. Uh, you know, twelve strangulations, uh, sixteen witness intimidations, and two A and B assault and battery on police officers. So, that's the kind of statistical stuff that, that's only arrests, that's not other types of cause where an arrest didn't result, so... That's what we're facing, um, you know, there's been an uptick over the years, we've had a lot of, um, increase in our motor vehicle enforcement. We're roughly between citations and warnings right now, probably around five thousand, um, which is on pace, but, you know, we're trying to get more enforcement out there, and it's about fifty-fifty, so a lot of times, the things that we charge for motor vehicle stuff is people that have suspended license. The officers, a lot, the majority of the time when somebody's speeding will, you know, write a warning unless their record shows that it's, um, that they've had a lot of, uh, warnings in the past. I mean, the goal for motor vehicle enforcement is to slow people down, to change, uh, driving behavior. And, you know, this kind of brings me to the next piece, we had a, a pretty good, uh, rollover accident in South Norwood the other day. Uh, three of our officers just happened to be right there, uh, jumped in, were able to throw a tourniquet on, fire showed up a short time after, cut the roof off the car. Um, the gentleman wasn't speeding, he fell asleep and, and hit a parked car and, and rolled the car over, but, you know, it doesn't take much for something like that to happen. While I was on scene, uh, while we were on scene, uh, the Cokely Middle School was letting out, there was kids coming down the street, so, we're always trying to kind of keep after that, that could have been really tragic, uh, something very simple, somebody that's too tired, so... You know, that's one of the things we're going to start to push in the spring, is, you know, people, if you're too tired to drive, and he was just driving a short way home from his night shift of work, fell asleep, hit a car, rolled over, and, you know, literally could have died. Um, but, uh, the police officers and the firemen that were there responded very quickly and effectively, and it, and it was a good outcome, so... It was great teamwork, great to see, so, that's, that's the extent of it for tonight, for me.
Excellent, all right. Any questions, I'll start on the opposite end this time.
Chief, uh, I know you're putting a lot of radar down South Norwood.
Yes.
When that pool's going to be open, they're flying right through that red light, so you've just got to keep maybe somebody there just a little bit, and...
Yeah, it's on our...
You're doing a great job.
It's on our list to, to hit every day, so we've been doing that. Um, we're, we're pretty close to fully staffed right now, so it gives us some extra leeway, some other officers, and, and what we've been doing is putting out a full-time traffic officer during the day, um, so that's been good. Uh, we also have a traffic grant that we get from, uh, get some federal money, and we'll put officers out there doing that. And they have different types of enforcement, sometimes it's seat belts, sometimes it's speed, but, uh, when it's speed, we're, we're definitely hitting that area.
Good, excellent, great job, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Mr. Plasko's next?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Donnelly?
Uh, nothing, but, uh, both Chief, thank, thank you both for setting such a nice pace for the Memorial Day parade.
Ah.
I actually hit the cemetery, knocked, uh, gasping for breath, so thank you very much, good job.
It wasn't really that bad, now, was it? Thank you.
No questions from me, but really appreciate you both coming in, we always really are grateful for the reports, so...
Have a great night.
You too, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
All right. We can pop down to our next appointment, thank you. We can pop down to our next appointment, we should be ready for, uh, facilities.
You're out there.
Yep, excellent. Yep. Hello, please have a seat, you can go right to the table. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you, welcome, thank you so much for coming in to see us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, absolutely, and, uh, for the benefit of the public record, we'll go ahead and have you introduce yourselves and remind the public what you do, and then we'll get right into your update.
Okay, my name's Paul Ricciotti, I'm the Director of the Facilities Department.
I'm Mary O'Brien, I'm the Facilities Business Manager.
Chris Ball, Assistant Director.
Excellent.
So, um, just a quick, uh, kind of refresh, we've been in existence for five years. Um, it was a, um, program where Dave Vajah led the charge, Bill Plasko, uh, did the first wave of it, and then Dave picked it up, and it's very interesting, I think about Dave a lot, because, um, he had said, if it happens, it would take us five to seven years to really figure out, um, A, is it worthwhile? And B, are we starting to save money? And, um, we're in our fifth year, and we are starting to save money. Um, the department has fifty-seven people, uh, and that counts some part-time custodians at the library. Um, our central staff, which is part of that fifty-seven, is the three of us and Cindy, who's point six time, and we had a point five, we had half a position that we shared, the other half with the Board of Health, and we did away with that, um, and we bring in, uh, seniors who are working in the tax-deferred program, they come in and help, so... Um, and we, you know, our central office, um, the two folks, Mary and Cindy, handle all of the bills, um, and, you know, they pay every utility bill for every building in this town. Um, so it's a constant volume of, uh, payments that are going through our office, as well as doing payroll, as well as answering the phones. Um, we have been tracking our work orders, we're on a, a school dude system, and it's a system that we brought over when we were at the school department, um, and it's, it allows anybody in the field to put in a work order, um, and then we respond to that work order. Um, and as Chris says, we take the approach that if the work order comes to us, then we're assuming it's been approved by the local manager, whether it's a town building or a, a school building, and we go and do it. The breakout of the work orders for the five years has been, and that's what, uh, one of the things we censure, has been eighty percent to the schools and twenty percent for the town buildings. And that has really stayed, you know, it fluctuates, appointed to every once in a while, but it's really stayed in that, um, realm. And the, and on the back of that sheet is by building and the work orders, and it's interesting, even though the high school is our newest building, it is the busiest building, and that's because it's the biggest building, and it's got the most people in it during the day, and more things happen. Um, when I say we're starting to save money, our, our crew, uh, our, our custodians are at, at the buildings, they, they maintain the buildings, and then our actually maintenance guys, we have a plumber, we have a carpenter, we have a electrician, um, and we have a, uh, the carpenter's also a locksmith, and then we have a handyman that goes around and does a lot of little stuff for us. In each of those tradespeople have an assistant with them, an unlicensed craftsman. Um, and the electrician, uh, not only does electrical work, but all of the fire alarm, all of this access control, the card swipes, all of the cameras have all been brought in-house. We don't contract out for that stuff anymore, we don't pay a mock-up on any of the equipment. Plumbing is all done in-house now, Steve Echka, we, we were able to I A M, um, and he knew the town buildings better than we knew them. Um, so he's been a great asset. Um, so, it's really, um, the one piece we're missing, and we hope to get someday, because that would be the next big savings, is an HVAC mechanic. Right now, we contract that out. is an HVAC mechanic. Right now, we contract that out. And we'd really, and it's, we have a person in mind, but that person has to retire. And because we really don't want to spend, have to train somebody. We want someone to be able to hit the road running. I'll just say one thing, and then I'm going to turn it over to Chris. I've been here thirteen years. I can honestly tell you, in my thirteen years here, I have not received one complaint from anybody in a town building or a school building about the maintenance workers going into their space and either being rude to them, or being disrespectful, or dirty, or not helpful to the customer. So you know, and if you think about a bunch of maintenance guys, they have coffee together. That's a whole different world, the conversations that go on, and the joking and the ribbing. And to be able to turn that switch when they go out to do their job and do it in a very professional way is remarkable to me. So we finished off, we're in our fifth year. We're starting our sixth year come July, and I look forward to it just getting better and better. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Do you have anything? I'll just go briefly through, like Paul said. Thank you all for having us here. In the five years, some of the major projects that we've accomplished, we started off here in this building a couple of weeks before the July first kickoff, because the air conditioner system down here died back in 2020. So right in the middle of COVID. So that was the first project that we ended up doing. We did LED retrofitting on the library, the public safety building, this building here. And we just finished up all the school buildings. We just finished up the Prescott School being the last school. So all of our buildings now, the interior and exterior lights, with the exception of the high school, we're probably about halfway through the high school. All the exterior lights are done. For the most part, the auditorium are, gym. We still have some hallway and classroom lights. There's so many in that school to finish. But that's a major thing for us to have gotten done. We did a complete rehab of the HVAC system at Public Safety. That just finished. We did a big kitchen remodel down there in the fire department when we first started. Down at the airport, we didn't know, I didn't know when we took over Tamar Facilities, that we had a building at the airport that we were going to take care of. So and that's been fun. It really has. So Mark down there and his guy, Jesse, did great. So we did new tarmac lighting on the airport taxiways, where the planes and helicopters and stuff go in and out, and the trucks and vehicles, nothing on the runways. We don't get near that. But we did all new lighting in their garage area, all LED lighting down there. The plumbing end of it, and the schools where the plumbing was able to be changed, we put in the low-volume flush toilets, all hands-free, Toto toilets and faucets. And that was post-COVID. So everything's hand-free. And I think we went from three and a half gallon flush to like under a gallon and a half, I think it is now. So that was a nice project to get done. What else did we do? We did bottle fillers. That was also, we took all the water bubblers out where the kids were hanging over the water bubblers and getting a drink and dribbling all over the water bubble. And the next kid came, post-COVID, all those went out, and we put bottle fillers in the schools. We did a complete upgrade of the card reader systems in all the town buildings and the schools. So police and fire can pull up to a school and use their access card, any of the officers, the firemen, and get into any of the buildings now. And same thing for the facilities guys. They can. And it's very, very easy because they're all the same system-wide. So the software and computer stuff is good for that. We upgraded and added cameras in coordination with Sean in the Technology Department throughout the town, intersections with the police department. And there's cameras in, I think in all the schools, there's upwards of two hundred cameras total. And the new Coakley Middle School, there's three hundred plus in that one building. All those cameras integrated together now on one system. We have two different software systems for licensing reasons. We paid for licenses, so it wasn't worth the money to change. So it's really amazing. And if there's ever, God forbid, a security problem, the police department can actually pull up in front of the school, and they can watch the hallway, what's going on in the hallway at any school, and see live what's happening inside there. So it's really great what we've been able to do with that. And I'm going to say somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand work orders a year we're pumping out, the guys are. And that's aside from the projects that I just told you about. Those are the day-to-day things. When we have those big projects, there really are work orders associated with them. So it's amazing. We have, as Paul said, just under sixty people in the department, and no complaints. We don't have grievances. We don't, we don't have, we have a good group. You see the buildings and the shape that they're in, go through the schools, go through the town buildings. We're proud of our guys and gal, Linda, and Mary and Cindy. Cindy sent me a message. Hi, Cindy. The brains of the operation answering the phone all day in the office and keeping us on the right track with what we can spend and what we can't spend. So but all in all, it's been a great adventure for five years, and we look forward to the future for sure. And thanks for the support.
Excellent. Well, with that, I'm going to see if there are any questions or comments from the board. Start, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the work orders, so the work orders, I'm envisioning as maybe two types. Is it just work orders for things that are broken and need fixing? Or does these stats also include work orders that are just generated because you also need to do preventive maintenance to prevent?
It's all kinds, as well as a principal deciding they want to move some rooms around in the school, and they want to change everything up, which we're going to get a flood of that stuff this summer because of the fifth grade is moving out of the elementary schools. So the work orders cover everything.
Okay. Because I'm thinking when the new school opens, the Coakley Middle School, that's heat pump system, and that's going to be something that you're going to need the assistance of the vendor to help maintain for a good period of time, since that's a specialized system that, you know, will be in your work order. But it's something that you'll need to be. And that's important, too, because those kinds of work orders help to prevent things from failing, and that's helpful to the Facilities Department as well, I would think.
Yeah. And we've, as part of the new Coakley Middle School, there's a company that's looking at the trending of the HVAC and all the air handling units. And they can, when something goes wrong, they can really troubleshoot and basically tell you what it is. So we've come through the job, we've contracted with them, I think, for 2028, because there's going to be a huge learning curve for us to operate this building.
I would also expect that, I noticed that the high school is the building that generates the most work orders, and the Coakley is kind of in the middle of the chart here, a hundred and one work orders. But next year with the new Coakley, I would imagine you're going to be seeing similar to the high school because of the equipment that's going to be placed there.
You're exactly right, Paul.
Thank you, guys. Doing a great job. And we're looking forward to turning the building at the Coakley over to you guys and give you a new process, a new project to manage ongoing.
Yeah, thank you.
You're looking forward to it, I'm sure.
Yes, I am.
It's going to be a great building. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Fusco.
Well, you painted a kind of rosy picture of how well you're doing. And I've been watching this since day one, when we tried to get this committee going and get it started to create the department. We were unsuccessful. We got second committee going, and at that time, I was pretty much chairman of every committee in town. So I asked Mr. Slater to take it over. I was on the committee, but he was our chairman. Again, we didn't quite get there. And then, as you mentioned, Mr. Jau was the third effort. I think the big thing he had going for him is we had a change in management superintendent, so we didn't have the resistance anymore. But he worked hard to get a lot of the detail done. There was still a lot of apprehension on the school committee side, that he was able to get agreements, everything to work through, and make everybody pretty comfortable with. So I'm just thrilled that we've come this far and that things are going as well as you pointed out. And I say, you create a kind of a rosy picture, but I think it's even better, because I've been paying attention and looking around and talking to people and just going in and out of buildings and everything else. And you guys are doing a great job. You hold the department. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. Fifty-seven employees. I think you need fifty-eight. In town, we have a hard time right now with our budgets. We may even have to be forced to make some changes in that regard. But I think the one department that can probably use an additional employee is yours. Well, I think you need, or we need as a community, an architect on board.
No question.
Can help with specifications, preliminary plans, schematics.
Yep.
And some of the cases could act as the owner's project manager and save us tons of money.
Exactly.
They'd earn ten years of their salary in one year, perhaps.
Right.
Some of these projects, like the middle school that was just done, clearly too big. We'd still have to hire outsiders. But there's in-between jobs-sized work, that such a person on staff could really serve your different needs through the year. And when we have a bigger project like that, really save the town. Do you think that's right?
No, absolutely. If you look at the Public Safety Building, the HVAC system would have been a perfect job for in-house architect slash engineer to run that job and get us through the finish line. And we would have saved a hundred and something thousand dollars.
Okay. We'll work on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I was just going to mention that what Bill says, but you know, when I sit here and I know all three of yous, and you guys set the tone for the town of Norwood and what it is that he knows with people, and to run a great program. Every time, I know I've asked for a few things, and it just comes right up, boom, done. But I was just thinking what Bill, what Lady Hoos saying, seniors that you might be working with, maybe see if some of the senior members that are in the town can have like a work-off program for their taxes that does architect, engineering, heating, cooling. It's perfect for them. As Bill's, the Haas Pool is one of those things with the deck, is one of those things we need to keep some people eyes on it, you know, project managers and stuff like that. But you guys know what you're doing. Everybody's doing the right thing, and you're saving money for the town, and can't get much better than that, as Bill says. So give up a great job. Keep up the good work. And we'll see you in a couple of months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good summer.
Yeah, I have no questions for you, other than just gratitude, and thank you so much for coming in tonight. You all are doing a great, great job. We're very appreciative.
Thank you again. Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Our next appointment for the Fourth of July Committee, which I believe several of them are out there, and we can go ahead and welcome them in.
They're cut back seven minutes.
Welcome. Have a seat.
Hello.
Doing good. How are you all?
Good, thanks.
We're here.
Yeah, welcome.
Another year.
Yeah, it's that time. It's exciting. Yep. And if we need more chairs, we can steal some from some of the other spots in the room here. Think we have exactly the right number? All right. Perfect. Yeah, go ahead and grab an extra chair.
Take that one right there.
There you go.
Where's the first-class seat?
Yeah, here.
Kevin, take that one right there.
We don't bite.
Take a wooden chair, yeah.
They sort of blend in because they're right in front of us. Yeah, there you go. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for being here tonight. As a reminder, we're going to introduce ourselves for the benefit of the public record, and then we'll get right into it.
Hi, my name's Lori Henry. I'm July Fourth Parade Committee.
Lou Harris.
My name's Kevin Broderick.
Phil McLaughlin.
Massa Colloba.
Mary Kintner.
So yeah, so it's another year we're doing this. And we just wanted to go over the plans and let everyone know how it's going. So right now, the theme this year is Norwood celebrates education. We thought that was appropriate with the new junior high coming in. And so we're centering it around that. The T-shirts are going to have the Coakley Middle School on it. We're going to talk about all the other schools in the town. And so that's our theme. So we're excited about it. The grand marshal this year is going to be Lou, because Lou's leaving us.
This is probably going to be my last year in this capacity for the parade. My wife and I are planning on moving to South Carolina. It'll be a long commute. So unfortunately, I'll be leaving. However, for the last two years, sort of knowing this might happen, been training Kevin to take over the town side part of the duties. And Phil McLaughlin has volunteered, or been voluntold, to take over the ham radio side of things. Because as you know, the Norwood Amateur Radio Club has been instrumental in maintaining safety throughout the race and coordination of everything at the Coakley for getting things going. So back to you.
Okay.
Excuse me. Are you still starting at the Coakley with the construction?
Yes. We did last year, too.
It starts in that general area. We pretty much occupy from the corner of Short Street all the way down to Mylod, and from Short all the way down to about where the planet storage is.
Space.
We take that whole area and stage everything there. In the past, long ago, we used to stage in the parking lots for the middle school, but obviously, those aren't available to us. So.
Sorry to interrupt. It just popped in my mind.
No, no, that's, yeah. It pretty much still starts in that general area.
Yeah. And the parade ends at the Civic now. It used to end at Shaw's, but they asked us not to do that. So it ends at the Civic. So just to go over the day's events, one o'clock is the Children's Bicycle and Doll Carriage Parade, which is awesome. It's my favorite part of the parade. But that starts at the First Congregational Church. The kids line up. The Colonial Boys come out, and they bring them down to this, we go to the Town Common. And then they're all judged. They give them free T-shirts. They give them a ribbon. And it's a great time. And then after that, at two o'clock, Norwood reads Frederick Douglass together. That's still going on. And that, that's at the.
Old Parish.
Old Parish, right. Okay. And then the Caroline, contents of the Caroline start at two-thirty. At five o'clock's the Norwood Five, Three K Firecracker Road Race.
Five K.
Five K. Okay. And so this year, Internet and Mike's done a lot to help us out with that, too. But we already have a good amount of runners registered. And thirty, thirty-three. And that is a lot for this, yeah. We, last year, we had a couple of little blips, so we're trying to fix. One thing is, we're trying to make it clear, last year, a couple of people entered the road race with little children, or babies and strollers. And we kind of made sure this year, everyone knows it's not a stroll along, it's a road race. So we're hoping that won't happen again. But that was just one, it held up the parade so we couldn't start the road.
Parade on time.
Parade on time.
Yeah.
So yeah, and so then at five-thirty, the fire engines start, and then the parade will lead the way. And we're very excited this year. We have several new bands that have contacted us, so it's going to be good. We lost one or two bands, and we gained about four, four or five. So it's good to have a little change. And just as far as like the donations, the town is so generous. And I'll tell you, it's, the prices are getting crazy for the bands. You know, one guy, one band couldn't, he said, just the buses alone were going to be ten thousand dollars, just to bring the kids here. So that's why they have to try to do two and three parades in the area so they can.
Split up the costs.
But we, the town's great, the businesses are great, the citizens have been great. And we want to especially thank the two major sponsors, the DCD and Whole Market Foods, and then Poirier and One Local for the next year. So and there's a number of citizens that are just donating money and businesses, and we couldn't do it without it. It's a very expensive parade, I think, now, because everything's gone up. So anyway, that's that. And I think, oh, and our T-shirts, I told you, is going to have the school on, and I'm very excited about that. And I think that's it. And Kevin, do you want to say anything?
The only thing I'll say is that we'll just do our best, me and Phil, working together going forward.
Excellent.
And I'm confident that they're going to be fine, because I'm making them do most of it this year anyway.
That's good.
The twenty-seven years doing this, it kind of becomes old hat. And trying to remember all the details to make sure that they don't forget has been a challenge. So we're really doing well. And I think the Norwood Amateur Radio Club's been involved in the parade since the eighties. So and possibly earlier than that.
Excellent. All right. Well, question and comments from the board. Mr. South?
I'll start. I want to thank each and every one of you for your support, your help, your guidance, your love for the town. The parade is dear to my heart. I did run the parade in nineteen seventy-nine. I was nineteen years old. How old are you, Kevin?
I'm twenty.
You didn't beat my record. There was one year that the town, we reversed the parade, as Bill was mentioning. It might not be a bad idea this year, ended in South Norwood, and it disperses. But you guys do such a great job, and I'm just hoping it's not that hot.
Yeah.
But just remember the hoses.
Yeah.
You know, we'll get the hoses out ready in my house and a few others up along the way, and you'll need them. But it's gonna be hopefully a great day, no rain, and it should be a crown jewel for Norwood.
We should be safe, because it's not on a weekend.
Well, I know.
The rain seems to be on weekends now.
The weather's been brutal. So thank you all, congratulations, and good luck in your retirement.
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, I'm just, again, all I can do is say thank you for your years of service, in particular, since we're recognizing that this year, and everybody's ongoing. And I say it every year, it's your group and a few others in town, the work they do is what makes us a community, keeps us from just being a place we live to, a place we live in and enjoy, and want to thank you for that effort.
You're welcome. Mr. Donnelly?
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Plasko's comments, and I thank you, Lou, for all the service you've done over the years for the Fourth of July Parade. I will note that Fourth of July in South Carolina can be kind of hot and humid, and you may in the future determine that it's beneficial for you to come north for the Fourth of July.
You never know.
You never know.
You never know. Building a house can take a long time, and who knows, I might still be here next year, but I'm not planning on.
We appreciate all the work you've done, and I'm glad that you've got corporate sponsors and citizens donating to it, because, you know, the town does provide a budget for the Fourth of July, but that support from the community is so key to making it the success that it is. So thank you for highlighting that as well. So, thank you very much.
And then I also wanted to express my gratitude for all of your work, and I have no doubts that we'll be in good hands, so, but also sad to lose you, and hopefully you won't be a stranger, and come back and see us again. And it's just been so wonderful to have you here in the community and here, like you say, it's hard to try to remember all the little details that, you know, have become second nature, and, but I'm sure that they'll be, they'll be fine, and that you'll, you'll have to...
No doubt.
Train them well.
No doubt, no doubt.
Absolutely. And I'm also really appreciative of the theme this year. What a wonderful theme. I'm so excited. But can't wait. It's such a great event, and it means a lot to the community. I know that everyone in the town, like, this is a big one for everyone. So really appreciate all your hard work.
Yeah, I love it. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your support every year.
We'll see you all on the Fourth.
Yeah, we'll see you on the Fourth. Everybody have a good night.
All right, that brings us to our appointment with moderator. Take care. Thank you.
Bye now.
All right, Madam Moderator, you can have a seat here. Welcome. And for the benefit of the public record, introduce yourself, and then we can get started.
I guess I'm not gonna introduce myself as Madam Moderator.
You can.
I can. So Jerry Slater, AKA Madam Moderator, Town Moderator. And I thank you for agreeing, Madam Chair, thank you for putting me on the agenda tonight. I actually came here because this is the one time this week, which you don't see me on NCM, because we're not rerunning a, one of three town meetings, so I felt like I needed the TV time, so I decided to come here. And it is wonderful, Mr. Plasko, just to you here, welcome back. And I'm very happy to report that we did make it through town meeting without two.
Smoothly, smoothly for once. I wonder why.
I did have to look over there to call on people. But what I wanted to do was just come before the board and talk a little bit about some of the thoughts on town meeting, some of the things that the Rules Committee, that we're gonna bring forward for the Rules Committee, and then a couple of other suggestions where the board is responsible for certain things under your purview, not mine, that you might want to consider as we move forward. So first of all, town meeting, two specials in the annual, I think, getting the business done in three nights, very lively town meetings. We had thirty-five new members, which was a pretty, pretty big number, considering all existing town meeting members had to rerun because of the change in size. We had QARMs by start time each night, which was amazing, and hopefully will continue to. So we were able to start right at 6:30, which was fantastic. And considering it takes a little longer for folks to check in now, between the electronic, the iPads, and then getting your device and getting your badge, that was great. So I really want to do thank town meeting members for stepping up so we could start on time. Electronic voting, where that has been a game changer, as you all know. We're still, you know, getting into a rhythm on that. One of the things that we implemented this time around was, based on feedback from members, was a set time limit of sixty seconds. You know, whether that was a little too long or not, but giving the ten-second warning and then the sixty seconds, it didn't seem to add a lot of time to the meeting, and I think people seemed to like that, to know that they had that amount of time. And then I do want to give a shout out to our Town Clerk's office. They did a fantastic job. Everybody involved in town meeting did a great job, but in particular, Team Town Clerk, between now with the check-in process, with collecting all the voting devices, with making sure that everything got out, having new members and getting, collecting email addresses, all that went into town meeting. So Mary Lewin team just did a fabulous job. The Rules Committee, I'll be finalizing that shortly, fabulous response. We, I'm happy to report that we have at least one volunteer from each of nine districts, and in several cases, we have five to seven volunteers. So we got over thirty people, and I, I remember the days when I was a town meeting member, that the former moderator had begged people to volunteer. And so, so again, very gratifying to see that we have members. And it's not just, you know, one, it's a variety of people who are, who put either some new members, some older members, some outspoken members, some other members who, you know, tend to be a little bit more quiet. So I think, you know, we'll have a great committee to do the work there, which, which is fantastic. Some of the things that are on the list for them to consider, and of course, the committee themselves will look at it, at the rules in aggregate, and decide what they may want to go ahead and cover. Since we're starting earlier now, we start at 6:30, we used to start at 7:30, the potential of maybe changing the ending time in our bylaws, which right now is 10:30. So looking at that, not too early, but I think, I certainly see the energy leaving the room, and, you know, just the tired faces when we start to hit around 10 o'clock. So that's one.
Fun fact, that happens here, too.
Yes. I can see that in the front of the room, too. Simplifying the consent agenda process. So I think folks will remember that the consent agenda is fairly new. We haven't really used it. Part of it is, and I did talk to the town manager about this as well, Mr. Rosen was there, Mr. Donnelly, you were there, too, about the fact that I think it's a little too onerous right now. So, yeah.
That's one I'd call it.
There we go. So I think looking at simplifying that a little bit, to make that more of, more usable, if you will, because, you know, I can think, there weren't a lot of articles this time around that could have gone under consent agenda, but there were several that were administrative in nature. You know, I think about the direct deposit one, that definitely would have been a simple consent agenda. So, well, I think they should take a look at that. And also, the registering to speak process, that's, see, Mr. Plasko, I'm trying to, I'm trying to...
You must be...
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm trying. I think, looking at that, too, there's a number of things there, including the fact that, you know, right now, by our rules, the first person who's called on after those who register could move the question, and that has been something that I know that has not made our members happy, and it shouldn't work that way. So that's another thing to be looking at. And then some of the materials, and I'll talk about that again in a second on the list I have for you, but the materials for town meeting prep and the timing for when town meeting members get those. One of the things that the post-town meeting debrief group that, you know, the general manager's office put together, one of the things we talked about is moving the motions meeting to earlier, in order to potentially even have the motions at the info sessions, or have the motions to the degree that we could go out in advance. So, things like that. I did talk to the FinCom Chair today about whether pink sheets could, you know, if there's like one packet of things that could go out, that might be a little bit more efficient. And eventually, hopefully, we will be able to just be totally online at some point, where you can really have an interactive set of materials, and every time there's something that changes, you can basically change it right online and get a message out that there's been an update. So those are some of the things that the Rules Committee, and of course, I'll be open to hearing your thoughts on that. Some of the other items for, for the board to consider, and again, I have mentioned this to General Manager, is the content of the yellow sheets. So the yellow sheets have, Mr. Plasko, I think you'll remember, I think they've kind of deviated from where they originally started, which was to give additional information to town meeting members on what a yes vote would mean, a pro vote versus what a no vote would mean. Now it's kind of turned into, you know, this is the board's opinion, which is fine to have that in there, too. But to make it more, you know, what's the impact of voting for a particular article versus what would be the effect of voting no, would be much more beneficial for town meeting members. It's something that they are asking for. And I remember that, that used to be way back the way the yellow sheets were used. They've always, always had a little, little personalization. I think, you know, when Bernie and John did them, they were, they were very, there was a little cutesiness in there and stuff, which, which made for an easy reading, which was nice. But the pro and con is, is something that's important. One of the other things that, and this may be more under my purview or the general manager's purview, is having a frequently asked questions document. I think we see over and over again, kind of the same sorts of questions being asked, like, what's, you know, why are we voting on a motion rather than an article? What does it mean to have in the article? Why does it say, why take, to take any other action, but we don't have that in the motion? Things like that, to again, help our town meeting members and the public with, with learning more and more. One of the other things is, with the annual town meeting, something to consider is, I think we saw it this time, and I think we all can pretty much predict it will continue, is there were town meeting members who wanted to ask questions and speak on the budget in general. Free cash was, you know, one, and not to have to talk on each individual motion, but to have a motion, and perhaps it could be the FinCom doing their report as the first motion, and having that general information on the budget, and also including their, you know, any cost save initiatives that were done, you know, what the Budget Balancing Committee did, something like that, having that as a, as a separate motion, and that way, members would be able to have the discussion that they would want to have on the budget in general. And knowing that we're going into some tough budget years, I think that, you know, we saw that this last meeting, and I think that will continue. And then the last thing for your consideration, and it's very timely that Mr. Riccardi and team were here, is I'd like to suggest that we have the fall town meeting at the new Coakley Middle School. I've spoken to Mr. Riccardi, and he, he said everything but the statue of the building committee chair will be ready by then. That's a joke. Yeah, yeah. But that the building will be ready. I spoke to Mr. Tolman at Norwood Community and Media, and he said, yep, they will be, no question, they will be ready, and would welcome the opportunity to do it. So I think it would be special for town meeting members. That's where it started, they voted for, and to see it. And I'm sure we can probably arrange with the, the school principal for some, if people want to get there early for tours and stuff like that. So that's, again, under your purview. But I understand it's, it's free on the nights that are currently scheduled for, for fall town meetings. So, and with that, I'll take any questions or any feedback that you all have.
I know for my part, on the consent agenda, we've been trying consent agenda here in the selectmen's meetings, and, you know, partially to help, you know, sort of allow us to focus on deliberation, because like you say, right around the 10:00 PM mark is when people's brains sort of fall out of their ears, and it's difficult to have really meaningful, deep discussions on complex topics. So the idea was to crunch things down to let us get more of that deliberation time. And so far, it seems to be going well, but then the secondary sort of side benefit, at least from my perspective, was, kind of lets the community see it in action, like, here, well, here's how it's been working. And obviously, we're a much smaller body, but it is, still gives you a taste of, okay, this is, this is what it is. It's not as scary or complex as it sounds, and this is, you know, an example of it working. And so far, I've, I've been pretty happy with it. It does seem to make a big difference, so I, I'm very in favor of taking a look at it. You know, I remember doing work on the original committee, and there was a lot of, I think a lot of people just had never seen it before, so it was really kind of hard to go, well, we want to make sure we don't accidentally, like, you know, get rid of deliberation by mistake, right? There was a lot of hesitancy on that perspective. And so the hope is now seeing it in action a bit in the community that, you know, allows to revisit that topic. So I think that's great, and I think going to the Coakley in the fall would be awesome. So with that, I will see what other comments we have from other board members. Mr., Mr. Donnelly?
Sure. I really do like the idea of the FinCom report being a separate motion. I think I was actually charting out how many questions came up during the night, what was our free cash balance after the deliberations of town meetings. So, and it was there, it was there, it was in the pink sheet, it was everywhere, but somehow it, I think it resonates more if we can have a dedicated motion for the FinCom report. So I do like that a lot. Great idea about the Coakley School. In fact, I wouldn't mind it being permanent, personally. I could walk there in the future, but whatever the meeting would like to do is fine with me. Outside of that, my compliments to you running a very good meeting, as you always do, and congratulations for your, if you decide you're going to run next year, you will be running for a three-year term. So congratulations on the change in the bylaw to affect that change. So, congratulations.
Well, I was surprised by the list of items you came in speaking about tonight, because I thought the only thing you wanted us is to reconsider the term limit, or the term. I had been thinking about some of this since I realized you were coming in, and generally what you planned to speak about, and as you saw my responses to some of them, those are the same areas of concern I had. The consent agreement, we almost have changed the way we set up the warrant to begin with, that we certainly don't need as complicated one as was designed, and simplified, if not eliminated, would be a great thing to do. Registered speakers have been a big issue, and everything else you've mentioned is things that can be worked on, I think, by everyone. I was walking my dog yesterday down at the Little League... I was walking my dog yesterday down at the Little League Field, looking at the Coakley building, and I said, oh, they're going to want the fall meeting down here, so everything's fallen right into place. The only one I have a little question on how we would handle it is the general discussion at town meeting, and you're calling it a, 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 a motion, there wouldn't be any motion, what motion is there, it's just everybody
Acceptance of the read.
You know, maybe, you handle it now that you allow, and not just you, moderators before you, allow the FinCom to give a general discussion of the budget, and then sometime after that, for people to ask general questions before you get to the next article, so I don't know how formal we have to make it, but it's not, not really a motion, maybe an article and ten-minute discussion or something, but we'll find, figure out how to make that work, because people do have general questions, that's good to get out of the way, and helps them, they want to ask them because it's going to, the answers are going to maybe affect how they're going to vote on the particulars, so, thank you.
Now, thank you for that. Mr. Sad.
Chairman, I had a great suggestion at town meeting from Mike to my right hand. You know those clickers we use? Can we voice activate them so we don't have to get the kid running around or people running around, save some time?
Oh, for, for when someone's recognized to speak?
Oh, use them as a speaker.
The microphone.
With the electronic
Voting.
Yeah, you can't voice act, some towns use them to register speakers, in other words, you press a button and it means you want to speak, and then they bring you, bring a microphone to you. That, you know, again, it's not something that we've tried yet, but it might be something that we do, because we have the registered speaker process, we don't necessarily need that, but they, they don't come voice activated, unfortunately, and I can only imagine if we had
Everyone
Two-hundred-and-sixty live mics that we were trying to control when you get to use it.
I told you it was a bad idea, Mike. The next thing is maybe a few more mics in the aisle, that's perfect, so, great job, nice, quick town meeting specials, and it all worked out. Thank you.
And then one additional thing I'll mention is on the topic of the yellow sheet, I would agree with trying to relook at the way it's presented, because it does feel like the spirit of what it's meant to do is to be more like the town meetings' version of a red book, right, where it's like, here's the literal language, now here it is in layman's terms, and now here's the pro and the con, so that you can have an informed discussion, and in the current form, I find it to be a bit more like it's selling it, like whatever the item is, it's like, okay, and here's really why you want to say yes, and it's like, well, but that's kind of not what the yellow sheet's meant to do, it's meant to give you extra context to make an informed decision, not try to sell you on making a decision. So I, I would also be in favor of that sort of extra eye, and I will be watching for that in future yellow sheets that come through past us, so.
Cool. Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. All right, I believe that was our last appointment, and having gone through all of our other items, we are down to the last of the selectmen's agenda. We finished with Mr. Donnelly, so I will move to my right with Mr. Plasko, any items you have?
Well, looking at the hour, and since I've been absent for a while, I'm only going to have one, and that's to thank the members of the board for their support during my absence, and for the very fine people who have contacted me, I even still have one today, left here at the office, who send cards or emails or even phone calls, wishing me the best recovery from my illness, and that's much appreciated, so thank you.
All right, Mr. Sad.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Chairman, I was just going to say about Bill Plasko, good to have you back.
Nice to be back.
He's very healthy and looks good. Our condolences from the board and the town of Norwood to a good friend of mine and possibly a lot of members on the board here in town, is Dave Tuttle lost his mom a couple weeks ago back, so my condolences to Dave Tuttle and his family, and also Mr. Rosen, Mike, Towncom and Deadtree, and two of them down the horse pool, if somebody can look into that, Mark or somebody, and then the, Joe Welch's son, they had a dedication back a couple years ago during COVID, and on July third, they're having a dedication for the Cape Cod Airlines, the new one's going to go to Neatake and Matasudid, and I just want to FYI say that if we could just do a little brief rededication for him and his family to come down that day where they didn't have a chance to celebrate the dedication of the building to his son, it's going to be on July third at, I think, high noon, so I don't think we need board approval, and if we do, I'll make a new motion later. The other thing was, I wanted to mention that the facilities was here, and I forgot, during town meeting, and I mentioned to Mike, a couple more extra handicap spots at, at the high school, there's Gordon Smith and a few other people, past select people, have asked me to get more handicap temporaries up there for them in front of the high school if we're going to stay there. And the last thing is, I've talked to Tony Mazuko and a few members here, is on September sixth is Norwood Day, and I think that's a perfect time to have a rally for the hospital, and I'd like to help cheer that and run it with you folks and the people on the task force, so just throwing that out there, and we'll get a, a little group going, because we've got to move on this, this hospital's too important to Norwood and the people in the community, so, that's it, Madam Chairman, for me tonight, and great meeting, and keep moving.
Thank you, Mr. Sad.
Thank you.
I'll have you coordinate with the manager's office on that, because I, I agree, that's a good time when there's a lot of, you know, a lot of foot traffic into town, it'd be great to go, hey, while you're here, just five steps away, let's, you know, keep spreading the word on the impact, keep people reaching out.
All right, so that leaves me for last, I'm very short tonight, but I do have one last-minute item here, which is that we had a community resident that had passed away, it's Mary Ellen Lennon-Arms, and so they are seeking to do a memorial bench, and they're planning to have a fundraiser, but they understand that they'll need to get the approval from the board and guidance in terms of where they would want to place it, so if you want, we can have them reach out to the manager's office first and sort of go back and forth and discuss what they're thinking of doing, or where they're, where they think an appropriate spot would be, and then come back to us with the formal
Forward to manager.
Yeah.
To manager for
Yep. So, motion made by Mr. Plasko to forward to the manager, do you have a second? All right, second by Mr. Donnelly, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. And other than that, I just wanted to wish everyone happy pride, and then a reminder for board members, we're entering our slower summer hours, that's the period of time when we meet less frequently, and in some cases, we will have some items that the chair may be doing approvals on if they're sort of wrote as we previously agreed to. Mr. Donnelly?
You just reminded me, I don't think we've mentioned it, but there is the Juneteenth celebration coming up on, this weekend, on the fourteenth, I believe.
Saturday?
Saturday around three, three-thirty, I can't recall the timing of it now.
Yeah, I was trying to look it up earlier, and I couldn't find it.
So that is Saturday on the common, twelve-thirty, celebration of Juneteenth.
Excellent, thank you, yes, we do want to make sure people are aware of that, because that is also a wonderful event, and I'm looking forward to it. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Sad, second by Mr. Plasko, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. All right, we are all set, and we will see you all later.